For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do welcome you. This is our city council meeting. We call this a workshop. It is a, it is a city council meeting. We do have a couple of council members excused. They're out on vacation this week. We expect them back at our Tuesday regular council meeting. Tuesday night, seven o'clock. So it's Thursday, July 6th, and it's a little after seven. So what we will do tonight is discuss what we can, and for, ideally, I would expect that the other council members will see on YouTube what we discuss here tonight, and come prepared to vote on those things necessary to vote on, on Tuesday night. All right. So we start off with planning and zoning, discussion of Grant and Radamacher's. Is that how you pronounce it, Grant?
Close enough, Your Honor.
All right. Request, first for a conditional use permit to allow the expansion of Bill Suparet, fuel and convenience by establishing a separate diesel pump island, and then secondly, a conditional use permit to allow deviation from the required five-foot parking lot setback, establishing a new driveway along the north side of the property with access to Nowland Boulevard. And we have a lot of information on this here. Since we've had our last meeting, we've gotten additional information on the drainage plan. And we've had limited feedback from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Does anybody on the council have anything that they want to say at this point?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I just have one housekeeping, I have a housekeeping and then some comments. On page four of the city council findings and decisions, number 14, second sentence of it ends with saying, "And the park board." That should be corrected to Park and Recreation Committee. We don't have a park board. And then...
You know, one of the things I want to address at that, at this time, you know, there's an agreement that there will be a certain number of trees. This one says 14 trees. A landscape plan shall be submitted for city review. You had mentioned previously that you would like to see something basically documented, but then work with the Park and Rec Committee to identify where that actually fits in best, so that it would be something that could be done with the long-term park plans in place without having to force something just to get it done now and then, spend money needlessly, so.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. What I would like to be able to see is an agreement to the number of trees that will be replaced, because they're being taken off the city property, based on the changes in the property to the south of us, and then escrow, the costs associated with the purchase, installation, site restoration of those trees, so that we can take some time to look at where do we truly want those trees. They are depicted on the drawings of where they are. I think that blocks our, the view of our park from Five. I think it would be beneficial if we had some time to look at that and Park and Rec could weigh in on that. It may be that it, they're better off going in Twin Lake Park, you know, instead of here, but not having the opportunity to have a, to look at it, have a conversation. I would like to see the monies put in escrow for use at a later date.
There, there are, right now, the plan is to take down all the trees along there. There's a couple of them that are in pretty decent shape, that are further back from the, the street access. Do you have any concern if, in that negotiation, some of the larger, nicer trees might be kept that are on city property? Obviously, you're free to do whatever you want on your, your land, but there's a couple decent-sized, well-shaped ones that are over the, well over the, under the city's land.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment with regard to the landscaping. Keep in mind that the applicant has up to a year to fulfill the conditions of the CBT, too, so if you did establish a condition that would allow, you know, consideration, quite possibly wouldn't need escrow. I don't know. That would be up to you, but...
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I have full faith in the Radamacher companies that they would fulfill that. That's not my issue. I think for treating people the same, I think that is something, if we were looking at somebody else doing something, we would ask for an escrow to protect the city. Again, I don't mean it that I, you know, I think that Mr. Radamacher is not going to fulfill that. It's just a protection for the city.
I would recommend that if that be the case, you'd want to make sure that's captured in the motion.
Yes.
I have a comment on item 15 on that same page. I would like to propose to the council for their consideration. It says, "A curb cut is provided as shown in submitted plans to allow for access to and from city parking lot to the north. Relignment of the parking lot is required by an Oak County to eliminate suddenly access. Should be responsibility of the city of Nowland." I believe the size parking lot, the number of cars we have here, I think our access on the north here is wide enough, maybe put a stripe down the middle of it, but wide enough for incoming and outgoing cars. And I would like to eliminate access at this point from our parking lot to the new road. The idea that if we can come up to some formal agreement in this, that should the park expand or something change, that we would, at the appropriate time, pay to have access to the road if it's appropriate. Right now, looking at the plans here, where we would come out of that parking lot, we're so close to this corner turn lane, and somebody pulling out of this parking lot doesn't see somebody turning right from behind them, and maybe, maybe looking at a truck coming this way and a car coming up Nowland and don't realize somebody's behind them. I just think it's, one, it's an expense we don't need, and two, it's, it's not a good intersection. And if at some point later there's different development here, we can go back to the Radamachers and look at something further west that would come into that road potentially. But at this point, I would like to strike that access if the council agrees.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
I would think that, I mean, knowing that potentially, you know, there'd be cost in putting in the driveway and, and, you know, extra cost, that certainly would alleviate that extra cost to attach another road, and after a conversation with Planner Stockman, I would agree that that road, the current driveway up, up close to the building is adequate for two-way access.
All right. Councilmember Rainville?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with that, and I do, I mean, we've not budgeted for anything as far as renovations of this parking lot, so if we can get by with minimal, such as a stripe down the middle, maybe some curbing or something, but minimum is what I would prefer.
I would think as long as we, we stripe, so nobody parks in the driveway, and even if we had signage.
Sinage also, yes.
But I think we can get by without having to intrude on the road there, so. In Shane's plans in that same document dated June 6, 2017, item number three talks about removal of trees on city property. Council must agree to the removal of trees and specifically grant the applicant permission to remove the trees. Planner Stockman, how, how do we make sure that this, these types of things are all communicated in the final language? That we, we make sure that we do our job in granting the permission? Is that something you capture? Is that something that is part of the findings, the fact?
Yes, it should be part of the findings. The plans do actually show the removal of the trees, two and X through all of them. If you're okay with that, grant the applicant permission to remove these trees.
Says, "And specifically grant the applicant permissions." I just want to make sure that wording's there, so nobody comes back later and says, gee, I, I just want there to be doubt.
Yeah, we'll include that in the findings, in number 14, I think, in number 14.
All right, and then the next one, after item number four, grading drainage and erosion control plan depicts grading on city property. The city council must specifically grant applicant permission to perform said grading on city property. I want to make sure that's captured as well, so that...
Do the new plans include the grading? Will they be revised?
Well, there's, they do.
Okay. So if you're accepting of that, yes, we will specify that as well.
And the plans indicate that on the, the south side of the road and the north side of the curbing, there will be sod. There will be two rows of sod. I'm assuming this is standard with sod. Sod the entire length of the curb, two sod rolls wide typically, typically. So on either side of the new road, there will be two, two rolls of sod laid down, and any other disturbed soil will be sod, not to be sodded. It's going to be a seed mix per MINDOT specifications. Is that something from a park standpoint? I don't know what those MINDOT specifications are.
That's pretty typical. It's just a mixture of seed that is good for avarial control. It has some seeds that come up quickly to stabilize the soil, and then it has other grasses that are more, you know, perennial grasses that stay there.
Good, good for the parkland? I mean, is that, is this ditch grass? I'm just thinking if, we should at least look at that, and, and on our side of it, if we want to have our own seeding done there.
Or more of like the bluegrass, you think?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
Oh, there's, you know, Councilmember Rainville mentioned that we don't have any, haven't planned on any budget for, for reworking anything for this project. The city engineer mentioned that the existing storm sewer system be replaced. I'm assuming that's on the, our south end of the park property. I noticed on the plans that the, the catch pond is running over to that storm sewer. I'm just wondering if there's any other options to eliminate or reduce the potential cost of replacing that storm sewer, if it's not needed right now. I don't know if it's realigning, if it's possible to realign the pond so that it would go right, that would be east, right into the, the county.
I actually did place a call to Shane Nelson, who's, he's out of town at this time. Talked to a person in his office who's covering, and that's, one of the questions I had was, if you look at the, the stormwater plans on, on the... Page number, yeah, four of seven. I'm looking at four of seven. I don't know what the slope, slope there is, but the, the end of that pond goes right out to the, basically the easement on the east side of the property. So I don't know how, how difficult it would be to direct that water to the east and, and either come into the catch basin that the county has right at the entrance of the new road, or directly into the pipe that runs north-south on Five there. So I have asked that the engineers, the person covering for Shane did not see a, a problem. There was nothing that they know of the county that wouldn't allow that. The same water's either going north to a catch basin and then all the way down east through that six-inch drain tile, which likely would need to be replaced. I believe that if this were able to go straight over into the county pipe running parallel to Five, or into an existing catch basin on Five there, that the stormwater runoff actually is reduced on the parkland by this new grading plan. And so that our culvert, as is, the drain tile with the catch basins we have on the parkland, should be sufficient at this point, and again, not cost extra money to the city. Looking at the, the drain that goes now from the stormwater pond underneath the road, it may not be significantly more distance to go to the, the county pipe parallel on Five. But that's something that, that we'll have to ask, and Shane's not back until the 13th, so we need to find somebody to, to find out if that's reasonable, and then you've got to talk to Carlson McCain and see what their thoughts are on that. But other than that, did anybody have comments on that? So we've got the alternate drainage possibility, the seeding with bluegrass at our expense, in addition to whatever the, the sod that would be put down there. Anything else on the plans that we have received since? I, I had a question on the, the snout. Are you familiar enough to speak to the snout?
Mr. Mayor, I can, yes.
Okay, so is that, is that to catch on, catch spillage, or what is the purpose of the snout?
It is a plastic shroud that goes over the outbound pipe to the pond. And, Ms. Stockman, did I submit a picture of that to you?
There, there's one on six of seven.
I have a picture of one in my truck, if you could give me a minute to get it. It works as a shroud, and as the high water level in the manhole exceeds the base of that shroud, it prevents debris from going out into your field. So oil and debris that floats in the water will not go out into the pond. So it's a, it's a, it's a debris catcher and oil separator for water that's being out of the manhole and into the pond.
So the oil would go to the top and the, the water would drain underneath that?
Correct. The water goes up underneath the snout and then out to the pond.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, it is shown on page six of seven.
Yeah, that's what I was, just trying to understand what I was seeing. So it goes, it goes down, and the, because I was thinking if, if the water goes up and the oil's on top of the water, then it goes through, but it's basically like a septic system. So the, the heavier material drops to the bottom, the, anything that floats goes to the top, and the water comes out through basically a, a catch. Which satisfied the other, the other concern we had, is that at this time, there wasn't a, a, there isn't a catch like that on the existing property, right?
Correct, correct.
Anything else on the plans that were submitted since our last meeting?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I have a question on Shane's July, or June 29 memo, and it, we discussed some of it, but it, mine is the, the costs, that he's saying that the city should incur the long-term maintenance of the CBH, MH 102, which used to tie into the county system, the long-term maintenance of the entrance, but that we've taken that entrance out. But just city costs, that we don't know what they would be. And Shane did say that they, in the fourth paragraph of his letter, said they can prepare a simple quote form for contractor pricing, but it would be nice to know ballpark figure what we, if we do everything as stated here, what type of expenses are we looking at?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
Councilmember Rainville's question, I believe, looking at it, is that the mentioned catch basin would be the existing catch basin that's on that, that north edge. If we're not running the water to it, then, you know, then, then we wouldn't necessarily be looking to have to upgrade it right now.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bryan, I, I think by eliminating that south connection that has eliminated some of my questions, because it was talked about long-term maintenance as far as the entrance into it, you know, right now, we don't, we just plow. That's all we have to do. But I just, I don't want to go into it blind, not knowing what, if any, costs are going to be.
Right. If we eliminate it...
If you've got your Carlson McCain plan, look on page three of seven. And you'll see what Shane's referring to here is the, the Radamachers would be responsible from the storm pond up to our catch basin. Okay? So that's the catch basin, and you can see that called out on another part of the plan. And he's saying they would be responsible to go under the road and maintain from their, from the storm pond and the catch basin there to our catch basin here on city land. We would be responsible from this catch basin to this catch basin, where it ties in with this county.
Which we do are now.
We are now.
Okay.
The question would be, is if we could go from this edge of the pond, somewhere on this edge of the pond, directly to the county, there's no extra, in fact, there's less going into this, which has been sufficient at this point. And part of what Mr. Nelson was saying was, since we were putting this driveway in right here, which again, right around the corner, just a bad corner there, but since we'd have that expense of putting that in, that would be the time to dig it up and put it in, rather than try and go underneath the driveway. So the city, he would, would expect, would pick up any improvement to that drainage from that catch basin to that catch basin, and participate in the driveway with an easement and a management plan. I think if we eliminate the driveway, we eliminate the easement and the management plan. If we redirect this water from the stormwater pond, we eliminate the need at this point to change that.
All right.
And this is, this is the catch basin in his other memo.
Right.
That's right here. But should the discussion go a different way on Tuesday? I would definitely want to know how much we were talking about.
I just don't want to go into it blind. I don't, we are, we're in the middle of budget cycle right now, and if we need to plan something for 2018, we should know what those dollars are.
All right, the, the other thing that was mentioned in Shane's letter of the 29th, June 29th, right after that existing storm sewer change, he mentioned a longstanding goal of constructing a continuous frontage road system from Nowland Boulevard to Iguana. And my question is, what is that road? And talking to Mr. Radamacher, basically would be the new road here, and, and consistent with his store in Old Grove, come in on the north, swing between the propane tank and the building across his fuel filling location, out in front of his fuel canopies, and catching the rest of the private frontage road going down in front of the bank and the restaurants. And that would, would serve as a frontage road at this point to get people through without going on the county roads. Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. Part of that concept, though, is the continuation of that frontage road north through this parking lot and up to 199th eventually, because if you recall, the full intersection on Nowland Boulevard will be at Old Viking there. So for people turning left to go north, you know, would not be able to do that eventually out of the Radamacher property here. So that would be one advantage for keeping this connection. It may be hard to get that back later, but...
Well, I, I think that, you know, it's something we could propose formalizing now, but to do that, we're also taking down this building.
No, I understand. It's going to take time.
Yeah.
We have to plan it, and I agree.
But yes, that, that's, the, the point of the concept plan was to say, should the park usage change, and we want to make this a downtown, if we want to have access up to 199th, this building would go away, and we would need a road that would tie in to that frontage road up to another point. And, and if it's important to have that formal agreement, we could at least propose that to Mr. Radamacher. So I do believe from Shane's letter, we've addressed if, if, if we do replace the system, we need to know how much, an estimate of how much. We've cleared up the, who's responsible for which, which drainage location and the frontage road. Are any other questions on that? So we talked about a grading agreement, landscape agreement, make sure those were captured. At this time, we're proposing, we would propose to the council not to access that road from our parking lot. Some cleanup on the findings, the fact there. We need to come into agreement if there are any trees that would stay. Mr. Radamacher, if you're available, I'd at least like to discuss it with you before our Tuesday meeting, so we can have something to the whole council. If another council member would like to join that, and we could have one more join it. And then the alternate drain location. That being said, does the existing council have any concerns beyond that, providing it's still a cost-effective venture for Mr. Radamacher?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
The other I would, yeah, question is, if you, you would be meeting with Mr. Radamacher, is it something that the Park and Rec Chair would be interested in also joining, if, if it works, time schedule and such?
Okay. All right. We will see if we can put a time together, and we'll let you know. Anything else that, so there's no surprises on Tuesday? Ms. Stockman, you have what you need to...
I will.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Just as a, to question Ms. Stockman, so I was going to do a motion in regards to an escrow account for the, the trees. Is that something you'll include in the facts and findings in this bed?
I will add that.
Okay.
Yes. And permission to remove the trees and an escrow for replacement.
All right. That way, just everything is in one spot, rather than a facts and findings and a motion here and a motion there.
Ms. Rainville, is it acceptable to you to use the six-foot size that we require in our ordinance, so as a minimum size, for instance, for an evergreen?
No, I want them foot for foot.
I wasn't going to say, they're like 45 feet out there.
No, I think it could also potentially be a mix of deciduous and coniferous.
May I just, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I just think placing a tree to place a tree because it's a part of something, I'd rather see some thought put into it. You know, I think storms come through and take down rows and rows of trees, and insurance doesn't cover to replace those trees. So it's something you could use in that case, if we don't find a need for them elsewhere, so.
Sure.
All right. Thank you very much, we'll move on. The Stadium Lutheran Landscape Plan. Planner Stockman, do you have anything in particular? I think there's no action required at this time, other than?
Well, I know this is a motion, this is formally approved, since the planning and zoning is not a decision-making body. They did comment on it and accept it. But in the future, I think it would be wise to just have either a zoning procedure or look at just send it directly to council to have a, you know, a formal decision.
All right. Anybody on the council have any concerns over the plan as reviewed?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
Just to reiterate, that there was no timeframe for getting this done. It was just, this is what we do, what we'd like to do. We're going to do it as we go, because it's all going to be donated.
Right, we've been a little lenient, or more lenient than any, because of their, yes, volunteer service. And we did extend their conditional use permit a little longer to begin with. So they planned to most likely do some of it this year and some next.
Anything else on that one? Nope. All right, item C, 2040 Comprehensive Land Use Plan Update. Planner Stockman.
In preparation for the upcoming comprehensive plan update, the heart of that plan is this generalized land use plan. It also ties into a recent proposal we have for a not-plan amendment. So it's good to look at the overall picture. We have the process going for the 2018 not-plan update. And the two most important things that I see right now are, A, deciding on this long-term land use plan, the 2040 plan, and then setting some dates or defining how you would like to see residents participate in the comprehensive plan update. There are multiple ways to get residents involved. In the past, we typically use the newsletter, websites. Open houses here. We, you know, could opt for a survey, we sent to all households. Certainly, we could put newspaper houses in. However, you think it best to try to involve as many people as possible.
Is it possible to start with a, you know, basically like you would a Gantt chart, but?
What kind of chart?
Gantt chart, so it's a, it's a flow chart that basically defines timelines. So you start with the end, when do we have to have this completed? And then you look at the activities that have to come, and then you, a Gantt chart rates them and positions them in their necessary order. So something that can be done concurrently shows up on the chart as a bar, along with something else. But something that has to be, is contingent on an activity taking place before that is put on the chart accordingly. So this has to happen first, then we can do this, then we can do that. These three things could happen at the same time. So we could be putting something on the website right now, we could be, you know, the newsletter's not going to come out till August, September. So we put it on the chart so that we can start publicizing that to residents, saying, here's the overall timeline, that we have to have something decided. Here's the types of things we're going to be deciding, and here's some of the opportunities. And as the council can then say, okay, when would we want to have open houses? I would want to be prepared for an open house, so when people show up, they understand, first of all, these are options that we are going to decide on for our long-range plan. I also think it's very important that we educate people what a comprehensive plan is. Most people move out here and don't really understand. There's a comprehensive plan that they can go to, and rest assured that the city's paying attention to that. When we amend our ordinances, when we write zoning regulations, even when we consider variances and various considerations for the council. And I think one of the open houses in some of our publications need to be, what is a comprehensive plan, and why does it matter to the residents here, and what can they do about it? Because I will bet you, most people have never read it. I bet most people on our committees that have obligations for parks and roads and land use probably haven't even seen it. Most residents haven't seen it. So how do we get that information out there? So as we're making decisions, residents can feel part of it. And one of the things in the classes I've gone to on resident participation is that you want to make sure that they don't feel outside the circle of influence on this. That they have an opportunity to weigh in on it and help shape their future. It's not, I want to make sure people feel empowered, and not, it's being done to us, there's nothing we can do about it. You know, I would like to have, it'd be too big for this room, you know, when we have an open house, so that people know they can participate. And whether a survey is sufficient, all depends on the wording of the survey. I think there might be an opportunity with some of the colleges around to have a decent survey done. A typical survey is done, without the formality of a survey, isn't really going to do a good job. But I think having neighborhood meetings, having community-wide open houses is certainly going to at least give the opportunity for people to weigh in on it. But to do that, we have to have the information. And what is the current plan, and what are the possibilities and options going forward? But starting with the timeline and required activities, and then potential activities fulfill those requirements. I have a question on the removal of the musa. Are we certain that that urban area will be, we will not be obligated to that in this coming plan?
I hope not for anything. As opposed to that notion, since we had received a letter saying it was going to be removed, and it's not shown in some of the overall land use plans from the Med Council that is laid out there. So I will try to touch base, certainly.
That's going to be important one. Can I ask you to turn on your microphone, too, I didn't realize that. Now, you want to repeat everything you've said tonight, for the record? I think that's going to be an important one, certainly out here, to know how we sit with the Med Council.
Absolutely.
I don't know, too many people would be concerned about the removal of the 80 acres back to residential. There will be some more excitement about anything else we do, so. But again, to a discussion we're having before the meeting started here, I don't know that we'll always agree on everything as a city. We know that, just the way vote totals go in this country. People have differing opinions. But I want to make sure that, while we may have differing opinions on where we want to go, that there's an absolute atmosphere of respect of the process of how we got there. And it may not turn out exactly how I want it, or other people in the council want it, or other people in the city want it. But I want people to walk away, say it was fair, it was open, and we got an honest hearing on it, but the majority of people wanted something different than I wanted. So if we get the majority of people to at least be aware, we get a goodly number to participate, and the process is honest and open and respectful, I think we will do well. That takes preparation on our part, we need to get information out to people. Anything else on that at this point?
Mr. Mayor.
Council, or Planner Stockman.
So I guess what I would recommend, then, is that we proceed with update of the inventory portion of the plan. We'll get all the parks data, all the physical data updated, the land use, existing land use is what we call it. The way the properties are currently being used. And then from that, we can plan for what options we offer up as our 2040 plan. And then figure out, you know, how many options we're going to offer, and how we're going to do that.
All right, so a motion at this point would be to update the physical inventory. And, now, is this, is this, where does this fit in our budget? What was allotted, what was the grant that we received? Was that just for the initial work, or is there still monies in that grant?
No, no, that grant covered basically your whole plan.
Okay.
So there may be, I'll have to look and see how many community meetings allotted for. If you want to have individual neighborhood meetings, that may be additional. But, you know, the document.
Can you get that information to us as soon as possible? Because we've got a budget meeting coming up on the 17th.
Sure.
And again, budget meeting for our 2018 budget, Monday night, July 17th, 7 o'clock, same location here for anybody who would like to participate in that, or listen in on that. It won't be open to the public, it'll be open to the public, but not for interaction at this point.
Do you, sorry.
Go ahead.
Do you have any idea, or have you thought about the number of neighborhood meetings? Or how you would break the city into?
We have not had that discussion yet. I think it would be worthwhile to look at the density on the maps and see what makes sense. I also think that different parts of the cities have different, you get up northwest, it's significantly different than down by Rogers Lake.
Right.
And so I think we need to look at the makeup of that, and then maybe, as part of our budget plan, say, okay, if we broke it up this way, how many neighborhood meetings would that entail? And what would be the cost to that?
Would you want something as soon as Tuesday to even just consider? Or do you want to, is that something you'd like to wait until next month on?
I think we need to have something, certainly by the budget meeting.
Okay.
Seventeen.
Do it that way, okay.
You know, certainly, you're not going to have a physical inventory, but if you could maybe by Tuesday, at least give us some idea of what the deadlines are, so we can budget monies and time.
Sure will, okay.
Anything else on the comp plan at this point?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I just want to make sure that any documentation that we do send out, whether it's for the meetings, online, newsletter, whatever, that it's clear that these are concepts. Nothing has been agreed upon, the public will have input, and it will, as Jeff said, the fair and open process. We have a history of information going out to residents, from other residents, and it's not clear, it's not correct, it's not truthful. So I think if we would be doing ourselves a disservice if we don't have a disclaimer of some sort that, you know, these are concepts. The residents will be invited to participate, and council's decisions will be made with that input in mind.
I think Planner Stockman probably still feels the sting of the open space preservation. Good idea, but, and that, I think that goes to the miscommunication that Councilmember Rainville is speaking of. As best we can, if people understand, when we discuss options, there are options until voted on. And sometimes, just bringing up an option, people assume the worst. And I think it's fair, you know, all the property owners have an idea of what they want to do with their property. And it's, sometimes those are going to be conflicting. But at least let's have a good, open, respectful discussion, and then take our lumps after we vote. So as best we can, we need to say, options and proposals, options and considerations. I don't even say it's proposals, it's considerations. And if we can, you know, it's a great opportunity to educate people, you know. The advantage of living in a smaller community like now, then, is you get to actually participate in it. It's not just something being done to you. And I think that's exciting, that's one of the reasons I moved here and stayed here, so.
Sounds good.
Anything else on that? Yeah, moving on. Do we have an encroachment agreement, or, I'm not even sure it's an agreement, but consideration for a fencing issue? And I don't, I don't know what, what action we need to take at this point. According to the background information that we have, there's a summary on page three. To proceed with installation of the fence is shown in exhibit A. Planner Stockman says the following actions need to occur. A and B needs to apply for an IUP to allow expansion of the outdoor storage area. A and B needs to combine all contiguous lots into a single parcel. And the city needs to review and approve the encroachment agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
Did everyone understand what, kind of how this played out? And how we are assisting A and B in helping them to locate their fence where they'd like to see it, but still protecting yourselves with regard to that drainage easement? One thing that was brought up was regarding the fence location. If we allow that to be right up to the right-of-way line in the drainage easement, and A and B starts storing equipment within that drainage easement, that maybe we should ask Attorney Rupi what language to include, giving us the, I guess, right, or opportunity to ask them to remove it, should it, should it impede any drainage flow, or that kind of thing. On a typical year, you know, you've only got the small pond there that's got standing water. But if it happens to be heavy rainfall or a flood year, it might be different. And I would think that they wouldn't want their equipment if it's going to be wet anyway, but I guess you never know.
And the wet you're storing out there, if it's pipes and things are sitting out in the rain anyway.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Ryan.
Planner Stockman, just a question, wouldn't that, wouldn't that same language about not storing stuff on that drainage easement apply for their existing fenced area?
Right, I would include this for all of their properties. If they were to combine, I mean, they have multiple properties now, so there's multiple PID numbers. If they were to combine, we'd have, right, reference the single PID.
So if they, if that was the case, wouldn't it be cheaper for them to just move that existing fence on the Nowland Boulevard sign, so it's not in the easement, since they can't use it anyway?
Well, I suggested that, that was my first, that's a logical thought.
I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to picture, okay. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to picture, okay, so you have permission to build a fence, but you can't store anything in that spot, that space. And it's gonna cost you more money to build that extra fencing versus just moving two sections of that existing redline fence over. And you could probably reuse a lot of the fencing, or some of it anyway.
Well, I agree. And that's the logical way to proceed. And that's how the drainage easements are intended, is that they're free and clear. So what we're saying is the encroachment agreement, if worded correctly, would allow us to ask them to remove it if need be, but that in a typical year, it's probably no big deal. But I think sometimes property owners feel that these drainage easements take away their rights, you know, or sort of reduce their usable property area. And I think in that sense, it can be a negative thing. Obviously, the drainage was planned for the whole subdivision, and it's a necessary thing as far as capacity for stormwater ponding and that kinda thing. So we do have to be careful, but, you know, it's an option. And I thought it was a good idea to try to, you know, help a member of the community that's been good to us, and try to sort of make everybody happy in that, in that way, but...
I'm just looking at it from, if I was putting, if I had to put up a fence and it cost me less fence to do it that way, I'd be open to it. The other question I had was in the encroachment agreement on number two and number nine. I'm assuming that we're referring to Exhibit A, the proposed fence. Is that correct?
Let's see here.
And there might be other.
Here by granted the right to install a fence within the city's drainage and utility easement. Yeah, so Exhibit A is where they would like to see it, which is right up along the property lines. That will only work if they combine their properties, so that 199th becomes the front of their property, which it really is, you know, where their driveways come and their parking lot is, in the front of their building. And then Farret and Nowland Boulevard become the sides. Now, what the IUP does is it allows you the opportunity to comment on A, the fence material, how well is the outdoor storage screened, and, you know, what this looks like as you basically enter Nowland. You know, our ordinance does allow the chain link with the slats. And I guess it's, well, they have big equipment. I mean, that's hard to screen, no matter how you look at it.
I think the big equipment is as big, as big an issue as the smaller clutter-type stuff.
Okay.
Stuff that would be below a typical fence-
Okay.
Is the stuff that, you know, you're gonna have the buildings, they've got a lot of the buildings like they donated for the warming house. You're not gonna hide that with a fence. And certainly their larger trucks. I don't think we want to... We need to be concerned about that. But it's more of the smaller items that, racking and metal pieces and component parts that typically, again, it is an entrance to the main part of the city. It would be nice to, if everybody decided, a fence like Mr. Perkins put up over here would be a... Somebody will change the ordinance to that, but but that's a nice, nice fence. He's got similar materials. And most of it, except for the taller trucks, you don't even notice it.
Right.
And from a distance, it looks very nice, so... But I think that, again, the bigger equipment, you're not gonna worry about that.
And it may be worthwhile asking or talking to A and B regarding their plans for expansion, because at one point, they were thinking they'd add on to their building, and maybe that would accommodate some of the smaller stuff. I don't know what, or, you know, what they would store inside, or if they really just need more office-type space.
Well, you know, they talked about expanding the building. They also consolidated their lot that they sold across from City Hall there, or City Offices. And so that equipment all went over to the storage area, so... Back to Councilmember Bryan's comment. So an item in number two and number nine, where in the last sentence, it says Exhibit B, so is that really Exhibit A?
Well, it's dependent. I guess we need more conversation with them. I did not have my calls returned to Rob Macheta.
Well, it says the property owners are hereby granted the right to install a fence within the city's drainage and utility easement located in the property legally described. And the location of the fence shall be graphically depicted, as graphically depicted, on attachment Exhibit... And I think Exhibit A is the one that shows what they want.
I think it should be A, yeah. Cause right there, it's along the right-of-way.
And so number nine is the same thing.
Oh, I see.
Just clarifying that we're not... The encroachment agreement is to allow them to put the fence where they want it.
Right.
Right, okay, yeah.
Item number five in that agreement. This agreement shall not authorize any use of the city's drainage and utility easement other than described herein. Where is it described herein? I missed that.
Which one are you on? I'm sorry.
Well, number five-
Okay.
Of the encroachment agreement. It says this agreement shall not authorize any use of the city's drainage and utility easement other than as described herein. Where is it described herein?
It's not. We should say as shown in Exhibit whatever, and then we should include that Exhibit.
Yeah, so what you're basically saying, they shouldn't be storing things in there that would be a problem if we need the drainage.
Well, right, and I guess somebody needs to call Attorney Rupee to clarify if we should include a clause regarding removal of anything.
Is that something that you would typically do, Corey?
Yeah, but I think it would be better to list to-
Alright, so council agrees, Liz can clarify that with Attorney Rupee? Alright, you have three nods of the head.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I have two items. On page three, and in the summary, number two. Page three of my memo, break. Mr. Stockman's memo. Number two under the summary. Combine all contiguous lots into a single parcel. Can we request documentation that that's been completed?
Yes, I believe you would be notified anyway for-
You would, okay, alright.
Cause there would be a new PID number.
Okay, so that's an auto notification, okay.
But one concern is maybe that should also be included in the-
A by date?
In the encroachment agreement, that that be done, you know, so...
So you'll make note then? Alright, should that be done?
I have one other idea.
Okay, go ahead.
On the encroachment agreement, it's not, there's not a page number, but number 10. Okay. I'm not clear with the first two words. I notwithstanding.
I as a typo, I took it as.
That's, but I just wanna-
Not understanding.
It should be not withstand, yeah. But I figured, but...
Section four, though, that doesn't... Well, I guess subsection, item four above, maybe? Oh, okay, so if the fence presents a hazard to the public, the city may take action to render the fence safe or to make the area-
Should that be referencing item four above?
I think so. Subs, yeah, item four.
Is this your document, or is this Mr. Rupee's?
That was Mr. Rupee's, or this is. So they have in here that the city may order destruction- Sorry, what was that?
Think they wanna be a lawyer. All this legal stuff. I'm sorry, you were saying?
So it allows us to ask them to remove the fence if we need to work in the easement. But we do, yeah, need to address the part about moving the storage items.
And I did have a note. There were no lot combination requirements in the agreement, so that needs to be in there too. So back to if they combine these lots, then the border along Farret and now a side lot.
Right.
And so that fencing automatically can be like Exhibit A and follow their current fencing that consistent with their setback from the road.
Correct.
Is that correct?
So the lot to the north of A and B, which is on 201st and Farret, then their front yard would be on Farret. So if they by chance had outdoor storage, they would have to meet the 30-foot setback along Farret. Typically-
What if they wanted their frontage on 201st?
They probably wouldn't get it, as long as they have local street frontage. I don't think the county would allow it. Unless they're, and I believe there's a pond along 201st too, or an easement there.
So again, we'd have another back storage lot right up against our main street. And against County Road to the north.
If you're starting, you know... Well, that's the intention of the IUP, is so that you can define how things are screened. Especially if you're starting new. I mean, in the case of A and B, they've been there, they have the chain link, they have the slats. You know, unless you're outside of that drainage easement, you really can't plant trees there along Nowland Boulevard. So it's kind of a tough situation.
So if there were an IUP required, it would be a public hearing.
Correct.
Typically, P and Z first?
Right.
Alright, so for the Tuesday meeting, I guess we need to see what the the thought process is on joining the lots. And what the encroachment agreement would look like in its final state. How quickly are we expect to do something here? How long has this been on the doormat?
Not that long. I really was only working with Mr. Macheta last week, maybe the end of the week before. So not too long.
Is this something that needs to be acted on?
No, they're not in a huge hurry, he stated, to put that fence up, I guess. Is what he indicated. So I will continue to try to make contact with him. Would you like me to indicate that somebody will meet with the owners or the property owners? Or how would you like to proceed on trying to get consensus there on what their-
I would be willing, again, I met with Mr. Walling in conjunction with some of his donations to the city. I can swing up and meet with him, if that's appropriate. If if that's helpful and not confusing to things, at least getting some input. Do you have other recommendations?
Sounds fine to me. I can send an email to Mr. Macheta indicating that and what we spoke of and see if I get a response.
Alright. The only other question I have is, with this said, you know, the, how it affects other lots in the, in the commercial district there. So you said if somebody that has that corner lot there, when they come in and they're facing Farret Street, they've got a 30-foot setback. So they're gonna have a fence along their 30-foot setback, and their building will be back up against the... What about the people across the street? Same thing?
Mm-hmm, same thing.
With the concrete facility up there, they, they were proposing some type of fabric fence or some unique fencing, and would hear anything else on what they're doing for fencing?
Nope, I have not gotten any updates on that.
Lot of material being stored back there.
There is, I noticed that just last week. So I can certainly email or call him to and ask him.
But otherwise, you don't see any additional issues? The erosion works fencing, now they're, they're buying that as a storage lot to join to... Are they making that contiguous with their property?
They are. They're fencing it to, so they can access it from the rear.
So the front setback is...
Legally non-conforming, right. 13 feet approximately? From the right-of-way line?
Alright, anything else on that?
Nope.
So the motion at this time would be to just authorize you to proceed through the documents and see what you can, with Mr., what's his name?
Make contact. Macheta.
Macheta. Alright, anything else, council? Code enforcement, council have anything? There's, there's nothing formal. We've got some highlighted items here. Fair amount of activity. Mr. Elphell proceeding with an IUP application?
He did, he got that in. We're gonna have a busy planning and zoning. Five or six public hearings. Yeah, we may not even get to the ordinance amendment.
We want to make sure that all commission members come prepared. Anything on here that the council wants to talk about? Anything Planner Stockman on here you wanna bring up?
No.
Alright. And that will not be on the council agendas. Park and Rec request to appoint Al Vile.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Mr. Vile appeared before the Park and Rec Committee on June 28th. And the committee voted to accept his application and move it forward to council for approval.
Alright, any questions on the council's part? Seeing none, I would recommend we put that as a consent item. Alright, RCA.
Mr. Mayor.
Change dates.
Mr. Mayor, also at the June 28th meeting, Park and Rec is asking that they cancel the July meeting.
Nope.
No, I'm-
They have to have it.
No, that's right, I'm sorry. We, I apologize. They recommend we approve the cancellation of the July meeting, which we, they did. And reschedule on a date approved by the committee members. Park and Rec also recommended the city council approves the moving of the August meeting to Wednesday, August 23rd. And the reason being is that National Night Out is the night of the normally scheduled Park and Rec meeting. So moving August 1st to August 23rd.
So just to clarify, the Park and Rec Committee would like to cancel the July 4th meeting and reschedule the August 1st meeting.
Correct.
So there'll be no meeting in July.
Right. Right. There could... We were looking at... I cannot see that calendar. Wednesdays, anyway. So the 16th and...
19th and 26th.
19th and 26th.
I don't know. We were looking at another date, but we're checking with one more committee member to see if that's okay.
Okay. I want to make sure that we get them publicized as well in advance as we can. So if people do want to attend, they can. All right?
So, Mr. Mayor, I would also request that this go to the consent agenda.
Any concerns, counsel?
No.
All right, move it to consent.
And, Mr. Mayor, and councilmember... There was discussion at the Park and Rec meeting about the fact that the Park and Rec meeting is right before our workshop. We've gone past the time of being able to include items into the council workshop. And I'm just wondering if council has any thoughts about that we just have a standing agreement that if there is something that is time-sensitive on the Park and Rec agenda, that we would be able to accept that, providing we have all of the documentation necessary, that we would accept that as a late item into the workshop and then subsequent council meetings?
I think our standing policy of that between Cory and I, we can make that. I think that covers that.
All right.
The other thing is, we talked about that because Park and Rec always is typically the week of our workshop or very close to it. Quite often, most of these things are not urgent matters. If we plan properly, we can do it now and it can wait until the next workshop. If there is something time-sensitive, we do have a means to bring it to Cory and she can... If it fits in, she can bring it to me. If not, we can explain why it's not appropriate for this time. But I think that if we do our job right, if we plan right, we can make our decisions and they can still wait a month without hurting anything.
Thank you.
Consent items. Ramsey Lion's alcohol at the threshing show. Any concerns?
No.
Generator maintenance. This is both generators, the city offices and the fire station. You can see there's a schedule of annual activity. One of them is $700 and one of them is $565. Do you know why they're different? I meant to ask you that today.
I'm assuming because one is the older and larger... Or smaller and older and the other one is the larger one?
Okay, yeah, the cheaper one is the fire one. All right, and significantly less than last year. This is about as low as we're gonna pay in the annual maintenance. In other years where there's additional things, last year we bought batteries. But this is significantly lower than last year. It's pretty straightforward. Anybody have any concern with that? A bit from Michael Pofol from the audit. Any concerns?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I have a question, though, not in regards to the contract, but have we had any luck in scheduling the meetings with Mr. Pofol in regards to capital improvement plan?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I may. I did talk with Mr. Pofol about it. Unfortunately, he's been very swamped as far as the scheduling and I did, I have been in contact with Mr. Mayor Kilon and Councilmember Bryan in regards to it.
Okay.
So they are very well aware of it.
All right, thank you. I decided to...
All right, we have the consent agenda here. Time and material expense report. You okay with that being consent, Cory?
Pardon?
Did you put this in consent?
No, or, yeah, I mean, it was... That's where it was asked to be.
Okay. Do we want to keep it in consent at this point? I have a question about the clear plexiglass panels that were purchased with those boards. I believe they're sitting on the pallets out in the maintenance yard. I don't know if they're supposed to be out in the sun or not. Have we ever discussed keeping or using those or selling them? Has there ever been any discussion in Park and Rec?
No.
I would think that if we're gonna have a recreational rink next to a hockey rink, we should consider some type of barrier. Maybe those panels would be appropriate to put between the two rinks.
I think so, too.
But I think we should have some motion to get them out of the sun and into storage, if they're still any good. Boards are over here in this building. Plexiglass, clear panels, I believe, are sitting over near the generator in the maintenance yard. I don't think they ever got off the pallets when they were delivered. If I... I just was there the other day and I thought that's what I was seeing, so... Let me ask this. Cory, could you ask Joe where the clear plexiglass panels are and if he has any plans to store them indoors? All right. I have one here on the inventory, facility inventory for Joe and Andy. I talked about maybe dues and subscriptions. We also have LGA funds. Are they designated for anything?
No, not the LGA, no.
Okay, so is that something we could also use to fund this?
For... To do the inventory? I don't see why not.
And they're not designated at this point for something else specific?
No, I'll have to check on it. I know that the Small Cities Fund is specific, but I don't know about the LGA.
Yeah.
And then, Mr. Mayor... Oh, I did. We did indicate in there about four hours.
Yeah.
I couldn't remember if we had or not.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
When you're finished.
I'm finished.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask that part of this inventory and looking at potential maintenance down the road is that we also look at what is the schedule for our routine maintenance of buildings? As small as furnace filters, salt in the salt... In the water softeners, the filters and the air exchange in the city offices. That we have documentation that those items are being taken care of according to the service manual that came with it or standard operating procedures as to how often you change your furnace filter or you change the salt out in your water heater... Water softener.
All right, anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I'm assuming that wouldn't be part the... If there was a maintenance schedule added to that, the building official trader wouldn't need to be involved with that?
I think that the projects we engaged him for should be this and I think this really begs a separate RCA. I don't know what the comprehensive list is, but certainly I think what we are expecting them to do is take a look at the buildings and the equipment that's in that, which from that we could say, okay, how many of those things get routine or predictive maintenance? And so we say, okay, each one of those has a filter, has a furnace. Each one of those has an air conditioner, each one of those... And from that, we could compile a list of routine and predictive maintenance and then ask for that. And I would think that it would be appropriate to follow up the big picture with the detailed picture.
So then the building inventory would include two furnaces, two air conditioners in the city hall and whatever else?
Yeah, and anything if we're responsible for... And if the seniors own the ovens and the fridge in here, you know, is that city stuff? Do you even know?
That's seniors.
If the fridge goes out, the seniors take care of it. But I think it would be nice to distinguish that, delineate that and say, this is in the building, but it's not city responsibility. This is in the building, it is city responsibility. I would think even things like smoke and CO detectors, things like that as well, so... All right?
Mr. Mayor, just to go back, you would reference smoke and CO detectors? Those get checked annually by company?
Okay.
So they are inspected, they're required to be. And at that time, if there is a failed system, they replace it right down in there.
Same thing with our... Same people do the fire extinguishers, is that different?
Yeah, and the exit lights and that.
Okay. All right, and then the hockey. I would like to call it recreational rink if we can, rather than pleasure rink. Because the way I skate, it's not always pleasurable, but it is recreation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I'm wondering if Mr. Glaze and Ms. Leduser would be willing to add to their request for council action that until we've received the information as far as the quotes for concrete footing, spent pad, lighting and electric for the warming house, that nothing be done to that site? And the reason I say that and I'll get... I say that because we may find that those expenses are too great and we may not take that, those additional steps. If they come in at an extremely high dollar amount, we may find that for the limited use a rink gets in the winter, because it's all based on weather, that we... It's not worth going that additional step, so... I would ask if they would be willing to add in there that no work is done on the site until we have the expenses associated with the pad, the...
Expenses identified and approved.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Does the proposed... I know the... When the proposal was made that we put the rink where it was last year, it was mentioned that the warming house be on the... Or the porta potty be on the far side away from the parking lot? I think that's probably not gonna work just to get at it. And so does that plan that was drawn out at that one point in time, is that what we would be committing to?
I think the general location, I think specifics of the warming house before a pad was put down have to be identified. But I think it makes most sense to be closest to the parking and the porta potty needs to be where they can service it. And typically, you want that near a warming house. You don't want to go all the way down the other end to warming house back here and a porta potty up here. So I think it would make sense to have it on this end. It also puts it near power poles, should we want to power that up, rather than down far end or out in the middle. So I think the specifics of... I think that what we were looking for is a general location. Is it gonna be out in the park, down by the ball fields? Or its current location? I think were the three that were considered. And I, you know, I don't know if anybody had any enthusiasm for the soccer field. I think the other one by the ball field is determined to be too narrow. And so this is an area that until we decide to expand city buildings, this is when it's gonna be idle. To me, it makes sense, go with that. But again, not spend any more money until we know what we're getting into. But I think as far as the exact location, that has to be determined so a pad could be put down for the warming house, which direction it faces so that we maximize the solar gain and access to the rink. The big question was, do we want to consider this so we can get the rest of the quotes? With that said, are you amenable to amending the RCA and keeping it in the consent or do you want...
Well, Mr. Mayor, I mean, the only reason that I put the RCA together was because it wasn't allowed to be discussed at the Park and Rec Committee because there was discussion that staff. And I don't feel that I'm a suitable person to be requesting the permanent location because that's not my expertise. But to get this thing moving forward, I spoke to Joe about it and this is the RCA we put together. Now, if you want to add or if you would like, we can certainly put that in there, but it doesn't really matter to me either way. And I can talk with Joe about it and make sure that he would be fine with it since it came from the both of us, but...
You're not gonna be teaching classes out there this year? I, you know, I think that we should have a little curling rink here, too. You could pachi ball in summertime.
You think I'm gonna teach that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
Can I ask Ms. Leduser to clarify that that we weren't... That the Park and Rec Committee wasn't able to discuss the location at the meeting?
As far as I understand, from watching the video and listening into... Or watching, reading the minutes and stuff, is that it was... The Park and Rec Committee was informed that it's staff that has to come up with the RCA for this, that the Park and Rec Committee, there's nothing for you to discuss, that staff has to come up with this. So as far as I understand, the Park and Rec Committee wanted to discuss this and the location of it.
All right, well, just for clarification, I don't remember what month, I think it was May.
It was just last month, or the last meeting.
No, in May, the council directed staff to come up with the location. The Park and Rec Committee had brought to the council a motion or a recommendation of where to place it. That motion failed. A new motion was then brought forward and passed that directed staff to find the location for it. A second motion then was directed to staff to get the bids on it.
Correct, and I agree with you.
Okay.
But you also need to clarify staff because again, I'm better suited to finding the best CD prices and stuff like that as opposed to walking around and determining the best location of hockey rink or pleasure rink. That is not my expertise or field of expertise. If that was meant to be for Joe-specific, then it needs to be very clear on who's supposed to be doing this because if you say staff, that could be Shane, that could be Bob Rupee. I think we were...
What you would like to see going forward with motions is when staff is called out specifically, is this contract staff specific or contract staff general or maintenance staff or administrative staff? So if there's something we would like you and Laurie to look into, you would say administrative staff and he'll take care of it.
Right.
Either by doing it or signing it to Laurie. If we're saying the maintenance staff, we'll assume Joe will do it or assign it.
Right.
Ask you for help if he needs to, but he's the responsible party on it. And if we say, this is something we would like to engage contract staff with, specifically the planner or the engineer, you're asking us to be more specific in our motions.
Yes, you would definitely need to be more specific because things are getting like this. I mean, nobody knew who the staff was, so nothing got done. So we don't know who was supposed to have done it. That's why, just to get it moving, me and Joe took it upon ourselves to put that together and say, just based on conversations with others and that seemed like that was the best location, so that was why the recommendations are there. So...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
Well, I, you know, in the... The motions were brought forward by Councilmember Bettinger and Councilmember Rick... and Councilmember Rickert, and it is correct, it wasn't clear. And we all need to be clear on it. I, though I, at the meeting, I bent back to what the council actions were, and if, if, and I said, if you don't like the council actions, you can contact the council members that made those motions. I also said that Park and Rec Committee members at all times have the ability to provide input to council on something. But in case, in the case of the location of the rink, that had been by motion by council, I believe that motion was by Councilmember Bettinger, I could be wrong, but I believe that one was by Councilmember Bettinger, that staff, and yes, we should have clarified which staff. The motion for the bids was made by Councilmember Rickert, and yes, that should have been clear, but that's what we had, and that's what I brought forward, so.
So at this point, you can talk to Joe, consider the modifications, and we'll have something for Tuesday and a stay in consent. I'll send somebody else to pull it out. And then I would just like to know the condition of our plexiglass and what our plans are for it. And at some point, recommend protection between the two rings. RCA for council direction.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I submitted this RCA looking for clarification to a response. I had made a motion in May. I was not clear in when that to-do list should be, have been completed, though Maintenance Supervisor Glaze did respond to it. With his response, I have additional questions, so I'm asking to be clear in when the information I would like back is back to us, and that would be by the August meetings.
Item number three, council directing Mr. Glaze not to work on the roadside at the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. Generally don't think he does. This week, because we were getting dust control, he did ask permission to start early because they were going to start the dust control at 8:00. I indicated what the conditions would be to do that, and he said he could abide by that. I think that we do have, I want to be careful here because Mr. Glaze does have a heart for the city. He's put a lot into it over these years, and he is willing to go above and beyond repeatedly. And there are times when we need him on weekends or we need him on odd hours. And we've had a standing agreement, I think it's actually in our administrative policies, but that he can get permission from the mayor to do things outside the normal working hours. If something needs to be done on weekends, or in this case, early in the morning, we have an agreement that he can get permission, and typically, we do that through texting, so there's traceability. But I would like to keep that option open because I think what Joe is willing to do for us, and the flexibility that we need on occasion, I want to make sure that we don't throw a wet towel on him here, so.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm not saying that there isn't a need to work outside of 7:00 to 3:00, but he stated that, basically, he was told not to do that, and I'd like to know...
Oh, so what you're asking is where did that come from?
Where did that come from? Where was the council direction directing him not to work outside the hours of 7:00 to 3:00?
I would like to go back to, you know, item number one, a detailed report stating what procedures under standards to be used when preparing roads. I can understand that, you know, what should be done before a road is regravelled or dust control product put down. I think even, you know, the comments I'm getting from people that get dust control is, it seems that when we grade those afterwards, we eliminate the effect of dust control. So I can understand that, so we can explain to residents, here's what you should see before we do dust control, here's what you should see after we do dust control, here's what you should see when we're graveling a road, before and after. I can see that. I think the other items here, the claim that the city is spending $50,000, $100,000 a year more in road maintenance compared to one of your township, the fact that he was directed not to work on roads outside of 7:00 to 3:00, 3:00 o'clock. I guess what I'd like to see is that separated from this to a separate document that he can respond to. And so this, the detailed report, I don't have any problem with, because the residents want to know what to expect on the roads. We get calls all the time on gravel roads. So I think that's appropriate. I think the other, the other four are claims that Mr. Glaze has made that you'd like some substantiation to, that to me is separate from the procedural thing. And so I would request that you take the two through five and put them on a separate request, and that that first be submitted to Joe, that the council direct Joe to respond to that or retract it. If it's not accurate, say, I'm sorry, I was emotional and didn't mean it, or no, it's right here, here's my proof. But have that be a separate thing and give him a chance to respond to why he replied that way, and have it be accountable to the whole of the council rather than individual. There was some opportunity to maybe discuss this separately, but I think if the council says, no, I think it's appropriate, that Joe get to see the opportunity here to respond to it, and the council, he's responding to the council, not individually. So if we could, if I could ask you to separate those two, and then, and I think that we probably still keep number one on the consent and the other, have the council vote on whether we want Joe to respond to that.
All right, I will do that for the July 11th meeting.
Councilmember Bryan, you all right with that? All right.
Mr. Mayor, did you have any other items on the consent? You didn't have any questions on the billing or the minutes or anything before we were done?
I had...
I did have on the minutes.
I had a question that I'd asked Corey about, and it had to do with claim number 276, crack sealing. And the council had instructed Joe to evaluate all roads and then crack seal only as necessary. While we didn't get a report back from Joe saying which roads he did, again, we can request that information, but if we didn't do that in our motion, my understanding from Corey talking to Joe is that the 7,500 is all the crack sealing we expect to do this year. This is based on Joe evaluating the roads throughout the city and designating which ones to be crack sealed, and so that's our total expenditures to be expected for this year. Now, if we want to report on which roads those were, I don't know that that was in a motion, I didn't go back and look. And if you want to know that, what that was, that, you know, we didn't request it in a motion, then we have to request that in a future motion. But that was one of the expenditures I questioned. Electric seemed high, but that's kind of a rolling thing there that... And the gravel, right now, Hillendale and Xenon have had $16,000 worth of gravel. We will continue gravelling throughout the summer.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
To clarify that, but Corey, is that not other roads, not just the two, right?
Right, that's the roads that they're working on right now that these billings supply to, so.
Yeah, these $16,000 are just for those two roads.
Just those two roads, right, okay.
Yeah. There will be additional bills for additional roads throughout the year.
I just thought with that amount, it might have included other roads.
Well, we thought so, too, because sometimes the tickets they turn in don't have the street names.
Yeah, and you can only get so much.
But Corey called Joe, and he said, right now, that that's just those two roads. I think that's a long part of Xenon, and I think it's both north and south of 24, isn't it? Anything else on the added bills?
I do have two things on the minutes. There's not much, many times you just read them, you go back and you find something. On the workshop, page four, second up from the bottom, under number D, or letter D, it says Rod Amaker wanted to develop it as a PUD, but it doesn't qualify for a PUD. That should be Raisler. And on the council minutes, page seven, there was a motion passed to call a special meeting to discuss and establish a policy for road assessment, and I'm wondering if we've had any opportunity to look at dates for that.
We have, I think that leads into second council item.
Okay. I mean, it goes back to being specific. We weren't specific with the date, so we need to make sure to...
So there was no change in that, though?
No, just a...
Just a note. All right. And we also missed, Councilmember Bryan? Did, do we have to sign that CD change? What happened to the CD that was maturing on July here?
On July 10th.
July 10th?
Yeah, so I was going to talk to you a little bit about it this evening.
Okay. All right, so we have two council items that didn't get RCAs. Corey put them in here because they're actually, they're items that are open out there, but we didn't get an RCA regarding either of them. So I would recommend, if we are to address them, we need an RCA before Tuesday, out to the rest of the council as soon as possible, but accept or reject bids, I think very specifically, based on what we have from the attorney here. That's a pretty straightforward RCA, and I would ask, Councilmember Rainville?
I will do that.
Have you been heading that up? Would you give an RCA for that?
Yes, I will.
And then feasibility study on Old Viking Boulevard, we need to set up a meeting with council, the engineer, the attorney, and staff, and any other interested parties to have a meeting to, that we talked about, that Councilmember Rainville just referenced. And I would ask Councilmember Bryan to write an RCA to that effect. All right, anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
Getting, does, so, talking about the recycling center, do we need to, does, would that be including discussion about going forward, or what we can and can't do, or would that be something separate?
I would, I would recommend we keep them separate, and start with this, formalize our rejection, make sure that's clear according to what the attorney said, and then write a new RCA in light of what we got from the attorney recommending our going forward and what we still want to do this year with the grant money that's available. And I, my personal opinion is we keep them separate.
Okay.
Acceptable?
Yes.
All right. Anything else? Being said, we will adjourn the city council meeting.